Good evening, my name is Addie Spanbach and I'm the Adult Services Librarian here at the Concord Library. On behalf of Contra Costa County Library, we'd like to welcome you all to our candidate forum tonight. We have worked closely with the League of Women Voters, the County Elections Department, and CCTV to bring this program to our community. Tonight's program will stream live on Facebook. It will be available at a later date on the Library and County Election Department's website, as well as the League's Voters Edge website. Tonight, our moderator is Ann Flynn from the League of Women Voters, and is the immediate past president of the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley. She is a former elected member of the Walnut Creek School Board and retired from the U.S. Department of State as a Foreign Service Officer. Please join me in welcoming Ann.
Thank you, Addie. And I wanted to thank the Contra Costa Libraries, the Contra Costa Elections Department, and Contra Costa Television. Our timers this evening are Ashley Coats and Kenneth Coats. They're sitting in the front row and they will hold up cards when you have 15 seconds left of your time, and then when time is up. The first forum this evening is Concord City Council District One. Earlier, the candidates drew lots for speaking order. Now I'd like to introduce tonight's candidates. The first speaker tonight will be Judy Herman. The second speaker will be Ron Leoni. And then the third speaker will be Laura Hoffmeister. The format is each candidate will have one minute opening statement, then we'll proceed to the question and answer segment of the program where I'll ask questions written by the audience. So each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. Personal attacks are not permitted. Statements made about other candidates must be in the public record or will not be allowed. As moderator, I will interrupt the answer if it's taking additional time. Questions will be submitted by the audience on three-by-five cards which are on your seats, and will be picked up by our volunteers who will be walking around. Now we'll proceed with the opening statements, beginning with Judy Herman.
Hi. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Contra Costa Libraries for hosting this event. Just very glad to be here. Albert Einstein said, "We can't solve problems using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." My name is Judy Herman, and I'm running for Concord City Council District One because it's time for a new kind of thinking. I have lived in the same house in Concord for 28 years. I raised my children here. I'm a wife, I'm a mother, and I'm a grandmother. I understand true family values and the importance of economic security. Now I'm running for city council in District One because Concord is at a crossroads. It's time for a change of leadership which focuses on including more voices for better outcomes.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ron Leoni.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Ron Leoni, and I'm a candidate for reelection for the city council in District One. I've been on the council for eight years. I've served both as a mayor as well. Prior to that, I served for 16 years on the hospital board where I helped to save Mount Diablo from closing. That's why we have John Muir Concord now. I was a teacher for 18 years. I was a district administrator and a high school principal for 18 more years. Why to vote for me? I would say because I have the vision and have shown, demonstrated the leadership to get things accomplished. Everything from the auto district to Toto Santos Plaza, what we've done down there with the statue and the arches and the street signs. And I've been in this city for a long time, for 42 years. My wife and I have lived here, raised our three kids, and we have two grandchildren.
Thank you very much. Laura Hoffmeister.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the League of Women's League of Voters, the Library and CCTV for this forum this evening. As your council member and mayor, I've worked hard to maintain and improve important services to our community. Our neighborhood police patrols, we've added police dispatchers, code enforcement, school resource officers, and we've continued our downtown music and farmers market programs. We've begun road repairs citywide, and our senior center operations are flourishing. Our library parks, recreation centers have had improvements, and I'm proud of establishing a recognition program for honoring our military service persons. However, more needs to be done. My experience in leadership is needed to address key issues in our community, such as maintaining public safety, enhancing our street maintenance, our pothole repairs, affordable housing, recreation and neighborhoods preservation, senior and youth programs, and improving our older commercial areas, our traffic flow, and also pedestrian bicycle safety. I hope that you would support me. I have 56 years of life experiences here in the city of Concord, and I've been proud to be your council member and mayor, and hope that you would support me on November 6.
Thank you very much. Now, for about the next 30 minutes, I'll read written questions that have been prepared in advance and also turned in by the audience. So, audience members, if you need a pen, just let the League ladies know. And my job is to ensure that each candidate has the opportunity to answer each question. Okay, the first question. And we'll start with Ron Leoni. What are the most important challenges facing Concord today?
Well, that's a little difficult to answer because we have several of them. We certainly need to continue to balance our budgets and pay down our unfunded liabilities, repair our streets, fund our parks. We've got to attract more businesses. We've done a lot of things here in order to do some of those things, but there's a lot more to be done. I mean, we just recently borrowed $22 million from Measure Q money that we had so that we could start paving more of our streets. And we're doing a lot more by bringing in jobs. I mean, we've, in the eight years that I've been on the council, we've gone from 12.5% unemployment rate down to only a 2.8% unemployment rate. So, we're bringing jobs in and we're doing things, but there's a lot more. We've got the naval weapons station. We also have, we're working on a four-year university and a lot of things, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy, what do you think the most important challenges facing Concord today are?
Well, I think there are three priorities that I've set from talking to voters over the last few weeks. And housing seems to be a top priority for voters in District One. We need to look at expanding availability of affordable housing in Concord, both short-term and long-term. Housing is a regional problem. As the largest city in the county, Concord has a responsibility to be a leader in organizing the cities to develop a regional plan around true affordable housing. This is something that the city needs, not just District One. The second concern that voters have expressed to me is to public safety. And I would support not only putting more officers on the street, but expanding community policing and neighborhood watch. The third issue is traffic, not just repairing streets, but dealing with traffic flow per se and addressing how to reduce traffic.
Thank you. And Laura?
Yes, thank you very much. The challenge is to Concord certainly is the budget. Without the budget being balanced and having good, strong reserves, we can't provide the services and the improvements that our community is expecting. I'm proud of the work that we've done on our budget, and we have a 30% reserve, so we're there, we'll have solid reserves for a future economic downturn. Traffic improvements and infrastructure improvements is another key challenge. We're already putting out funds for repairing and repaving roads in our community, but more needs to be done in that area as well, so that we can ensure that we can get to our jobs and businesses can get their goods and commerce on proper roadways. And the other thing is public safety. We've got a great community with great safety record here, and we need to ensure that we maintain that public safety. And again, affordable housing. I'm proud that on Tuesday night, we approved a master developer for the Coast Guard housing that envisions up to 800 housing units, with over 30% of them being affordable to our community. So, we are making progress in those areas, but more still needs to be done on that, and I have the experience to continue to move forward those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, you get the next question. Do you think our downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
I think our downtown is actually starting to be thriving. You can see all the activity down there around Toto Santos Park and the improvements that are happening in our downtown. We have investors that are acquiring properties and looking to enhance our downtown and tie it into the BART station. So, we have pedestrian connectivity, bicycle connectivity, so that we can have the ability to move people very easily between the downtown area and the transit system. So, I think we've done a lot already in laying the groundwork and re-establishing Toto Santos Park as the heart of our community, what we like to call is the community's outdoor living room. And the many activities that we have there are flourishing, and it's bringing more business and also housing into our community. We have several housing projects that are underway, that have been, started to be constructed, and we have several that are in the process right now, with one that will be coming forward very shortly. That's a very exciting project in our community. So, I think we're doing a great job there, and we've laid a good foundation to be able to still take the downtown and move it to its next level. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
Yes, I'm really excited and pleased with the accomplishments that the council has done, but specifically, the things that I was able to do in order to make sure that we've improved our downtown. I was the one that had the vision for the downtown specific plan. We organized that. We, through that community process that we did, we decided, we made a determining plan on how it should grow and what should happen there. And through that, I think we have made the downtown more vibrant architecturally. We have approved early California architecture down there with the new street signs. I was the one actually that designed those. Also, the arches, I designed those. I was the one that organized the statue of Don Salviopacheco, and we raised $200,000 of donations in order to build that.
Thank you. And Judy?
I think that the downtown is great. Toto Santos Park is a great space. It gets a lot of use. It gets, there are some fabulous events there. The only problem is that the problems have gone elsewhere. The homeless have just migrated somewhere else, specifically into District One. I'm hearing from a lot of voters, there's homelessness in some areas where my kids used to play. And we need to deal with those issues as well. We can't just focus on the downtown area and say, "Oh, we've done..." And they've done a great job with the downtown. I think Toto Santos is a great space.
Thank you very much. The next question. If you would change one thing in Concord zoning code, what would it be? Ron, you want to take that one first?
Yeah, actually, I've already had a discussion with the city manager about this. I think one of the problems that we've had is, we have zoning, but we haven't looked to see an overview that we might want to change and revisit where we're putting things. For example, we had an auto district down over by the Diamond area, and yet, we built a lumberyard. The lumberyard doesn't really quite fit there, and I think it's because of the zoning, the way we allowed it. We've got another situation that's coming up now, where in another area, the Olivera, we're going to be having a methadone clinic, and that's because of the way we zoned it, allowing for that. So, what we need to do is, we need to take a look at our zoning overall and try to figure out, what do we want in certain areas, what don't we want in certain areas, and really make sure that we nail those things down. Otherwise, we're going to end up with things and places that we don't want.
Judy?
I see that we could improve, increase housing availability with our zoning. And my colleagues can correct me on this. I believe there's been some movement in this area in terms of allowing granny flats. We used to call them granny flats. I don't know what they're called now. But small units in the back of single-family homes that would allow family members sometimes, but maybe just a renter, a student, someone who can just, is fine with a small unit in the back of homes. That would improve the availability of housing and affordable housing in the area.
On that, the city has approved zoning regulations and streamlining for what we call accessory dwelling units, which is the granny units. We've also worked with the water district to reduce fees, and we've reduced our city fees to help provide that as an opportunity for family homeowners to have their children to live there, or their children to live in the home, and maybe the parents want to live in a smaller unit on the property. As far as our zoning code goes, we need to have more specifics put into the code as to what we want to see in terms of certain land uses and where they need to go. During the recession, we somewhat broadened it out to try to encourage businesses to locate in our community, but now that the community's robust, we need to take another look at that. And one of the things I think is important in District One is to start to look at some specific plans for the tired, older commercial areas that we have in our district. Those areas need to have some rejuvenation, and if we get a solid vision and work with the property owners, I think we can enhance those and make them another positive asset in the Clayton Valley area and in District One.
Thank you very much. Now Judy, you get the first one. I'd like to expand this topic a little bit more. What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space, or rehabbing or expanding or better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts? What would you do to meet this goal?
Oh, wow. What's more important? I think they're both important. Certainly, rehabbing what we have is going to be a short-term fix. If we can create more housing, if we can improve the space that we have, if we can make it more available for businesses, if we can make more housing available through rehabbing what we've got, that's great. That's a shorter-term fix, but we also need to think in terms of long-term planning. So, they're kind of two different things. You're asking, is short-term planning or long-term planning more important? And I think the answer is yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm Ron Leoni.
Run.
I actually agree with Judy that we have to do both things, but we are doing both things. We've been working on that. Through the downtown specific committee that we worked on, we designed to allow for new apartments to be coming into the downtown. We have about 1,000 apartments on the books right now, but they're in different stages, and with the economy, it's up to the developers to develop them. But we do have them in place right now, where they can be developing them. And as Ms. Hoffmeister just said a little while ago about the Coast Guard property we just approved, we've got a developer that wants to come in there and do 800 units there. In addition to that, we've been rehabbing a lot of our other apartment buildings with our affordable housing money that we were able to give them. And we gave out last year about $2 million worth of money that we were able to help to refurbish some of these older buildings.
Thank you. And Laura?
Yes, I agree. It's both. You need to have both the short-term and the long-term. We've been doing a lot in terms of development in the infill in the downtown in terms of project approvals. That was mentioned about new housing in our downtown post of transit. District One, however, is built out. We all know that. We live there. There's not a lot of opportunity for new housing. What we have had success with is a senior loan program to help rehab homes and allow seniors to continue to stay and live in their home. We also have done the assisted or the accessory dwelling units to allow additional housing on existing residential properties, so that people can have their family members stay on their property and live close by. And we also have a need to do additional improvements in our commercial areas, and those could possibly be mixed use if you do a specific plan. You've got a lot of commercial area there, and maybe there can be some mixed use that's done on those properties that are a little bit tired and need some rejuvenation in the District One area.
Thank you. And Laura, I'll stick with you, changing gears a little bit here. Is Concord prepared for a disaster?
I'm proud to say that Concord is prepared for a disaster. We have a good reserve of 30%. You need that money, so when the disaster hits, you can pay the bills to get the equipment in here to assist the community, not only in the immediate term, in terms of moving freeway off, overpasses off of roadways and that stuff, but you also need to have the money to rebuild as well, rebuild that infrastructure. And the other great thing I'm proud of in this community is the work of our public safety, our law enforcement, our public workspeople. We've had some disasters, so to speak, with a big apartment complex that caught fire arson-wise, and we responded to that. Not only that, we have a great CERT team, which is the Community Emergency Response Team. We have outstanding volunteer police services unit, and all of those working together in our community, along with the many nonprofit groups. And I know some of the churches and schools also have disaster plans. We work very closely with them and with the county as a whole through the centralized emergency operation coordinating system, which coordinates also with the state. So, I'm pleased that, I think Concord is well-prepared for a disaster. And we've all had training as council members in our roles for disasters as well, and we keep having continued training.
Thank you. And Judy, what is your opinion on a Concord being prepared for a disaster?
I agree with Laura. I think that Concord is well-prepared for a disaster in many ways. I'd like to see us maybe do more disaster drills, but we have the resources, and I think we have a great police force. We have great fire service here in Concord that would respond in the case of a disaster. We do have a reserve that would be available for paying the bills and doing the repairs that would be required. I would hope that we have a plan for evacuation. So, we could maybe do a little more, but I'm pretty confident in Concord.
Good. And Ron?
Well, all of those things that were said were true, and the greatest example of that is when we had that major fire downtown. And you could see how the police and the fire and the nonprofits all came together and some of the stores, how everybody came together and worked to help the displaced families, and then also to block off the areas, and then to shut it down. And not only did they put out the fire, they salvaged a lot of the foundation, which I was very proud of. As far as other disasters go, we have done tabletop training. We've been working on this. We've got a great police force, and we do have a $30 million reserve. Actually, I think it's like $33 million in reserve right now, which is going to help us in case we have a rainy day, that we have to take care of something. So, I feel confident that we're doing a good job and want to continue that.
Thank you. Now Judy, you get the first one on this. Are current salary and benefits for city employees sustainable? If not, what do you suggest we do about future employee contracts?
I think it's important to adequately compensate our city employees, that their benefits be covered. I know that there is, there's a problem with their pension benefits and that the city is working to cover those and make sure we're in good shape when our employees retire. The pension is payment for work already done, so the employees have already earned that money. We need to make sure that we have it available for them, and I know the city is working on that, paying down that debt to our employees. It's important to maintain our tax base. We need to look at what else we can do tax-wise, if that's necessary, and making sure we're using our resources efficiently to allow us to continue to support or to, not support, but pay our employees a living wage, a good wage, and make sure they have the benefits that they need.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, thank you very much. Our salary and benefits are competitive in the marketplace, generally speaking, but right now, we have a really hot economy, as was mentioned, and unemployment's down to 2.5%, 2.7%. So, it's very hard for us to start to attract engineers, building officials, and other folks in our community to be able to work here. So, we have a balancing act of trying to provide reasonable salary, competitive salary and benefits. I'm proud that we've been able to negotiate and work with our employee units, so that they pay their share of the retirement pension, and that they also are paying more for their healthcare premium. We also have long-range fiscal sustainability plan, which identifies that if we have excess funds, we take those excess funds and we move them over to pay additionally to our retirement funds and our healthcare funds. And the last thing is, it's not amount of money that we can grow our way out of it. We, certainly, additional revenue is welcome, but we also have to have a long-range view as to how we can also work with our labor units in order to ensure that we keep competitive salaries, but still are able to balance the budget at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ron?
Yeah, one of the good things that the city of Concord, I think, does is we take the long-term look at our forecast of how we're doing. And currently, financially, we're doing well. Like we mentioned before, with the $33 million reserve, we're paying our budget, we're paying down our unfunded liability benefit. We have made some good movements by working with our employees to tap the benefits so that it doesn't continue to grow. We've done a few things like that, and those are all important things, and we've negotiated with them to pay their full share of their part of their benefit packages. But we've got to do more in trying to entice new companies to come in, increase the tax base. When we first did Measure Q, we anticipated we would get about $8 or $9 million a year. Because of the economy, we're now up to $13 million a year that we're getting from Measure Q. So, we need to just continue to work on those things and grow our economy.
Thank you. So, Ron, we'll stay with you for this question. What kind of policies, if any, will you pursue to promote social and racial justice in Concord?
Well, I think, number one, lead by example. What I've, you know, a lot of people don't realize that I am Catholic, you know, myself. My parents were both immigrants. Well, my grandparents were immigrants. And I've got a son that lives in Japan, who's dating someone from China. I've got another son who's dating someone from Russia, and I've got a daughter just married in Africa. So, I think lead by example is number one. The other thing is to make sure that we treat everybody equally, and I think we do that. If you look at people that we hire, you look at the people that we put on our commissions, we have to, those are the types of things we have to do. And so, I think we're being fair, and I think that that's the way to do it.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm proud of the work that I was able to do as mayor just the last couple of years by leading by example, as just was mentioned. I'm proud of the work that I was able to do and bring to the council that approved our inclusive community resolution, that we are a community for all. We worked with a variety of stakeholders in the community around the table, those from the Lambda Group, those from our Hispanic community, those from the Hindu community, to come up with a statement that we stand behind as a council and as our community employees, and as a community as a whole, that promotes social justice and social equity for all in our community. So, I think that's true. We've led by example. We've worked on that document. We live by that document. It's incorporated into our operating principles, from the city council down to any one of the staff, and we've done training on that with our staff employees to ensure that they're aware of those guiding principles and those factors that we believe makes our community the community for all families in Concord.
Thank you. And Judy?
Social justice isn't about, isn't just about making sure you're fair to everyone. It's about meeting the needs of the most vulnerable in your community. And I see that as one of the areas that Concord could do better. We have 800 to 1,000 homeless people here in Concord, and we need to address that and develop some creative solutions. A lot of communities have developed some really creative solutions to transitional housing and moving people in from transitional housing to permanent housing. And we need to look at what other people are doing. We need to see what we can do to provide housing. And that's just one area we need to look at. What are the needs of the most vulnerable? We need to look at just cause evictions... We need to look at just cause evictions. We need to look at a just rent stabilization program, and that's how you make a community that is fair and just. You look at what the problems are of the most vulnerable in your community.
Thank you. Laura, we'll start with you on this next question. What would you do to increase job opportunities for your constituents?
Thank you very much. There's a lot of work that I'm proud that's been done in our community. Unemployment is down to 2.7%, so we've seen a lot of jobs. We've been working through the recession to ensure that we had businesses and buildings here for jobs to locate as the cost of leasing got more expensive either in the South Bay or in the San Francisco-Oakland marketplace. We've been able to attract them. We have a strong economic development department that I'm glad that we've been able to work on, to enhance our marketing of our community, to outreach to businesses, and also having a variety of jobs in our community, and bringing in jobs that are well-paying so that people can actually have benefits and have a good lifestyle in our community, as well as meeting the needs for those that are looking for entry-level jobs. So we have a lot of businesses that have entry-level opportunities, that you can stay with the company and move up as your experiences get more robust, and I'm glad to see that we have been able to make a lot of progress in this area to the extent that we now have traffic problems in our community.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, since I've been on the council, we have attracted through our specific programs that we've done with our economic development, we've attracted 5,000 new jobs into the City of Concord. We've added city staff specifically to help with the development, our economic development. We have programs to try to attract millennials into our community for businesses. We've tried to make this more business-friendly, eliminating some of the red tape. As was mentioned, the unemployment rate has been going down. We have been attracting people here, which is great. And as long as you have good public safety, I think that'll attract more people here into the area, because people are going to feel more comfortable when they feel safe here. And we've been having that as one of our main priorities.
Thank you. And Judy?
When you have a low unemployment rate, like we have here in Concord, you're talking about a group of people that, well, probably they're definitely people that aren't being counted, but beyond that, you're talking about a group of people that are going to be more difficult to employ, for whatever reason. And it would be helpful to have programs and to develop relationships with companies that would provide employment for people who are more vulnerable. I work for the Department of Corrections, so my first thought, of course, is for convicted felons who have a very difficult time finding work once they get released. And if we had a job training program for them, and a lot of them need really basic things, like show up to work on time. We don't generally think of that as job training, but there are people that need that kind of, that level of training, and we need to provide that to them to get to some of these unemployed people who are very difficult to employ.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, we're running out of time, so the last question. What is the single most important issue today in your district, and what specific steps would you take to address this issue? And we'll start with Judy.
I think what my voters are telling me is their most important is public safety. Like I said, I work for the Department of Corrections. I'm a psychologist, and I see the need for public safety being two-pronged. You have to not only deal with the law enforcement issue and the criminal justice piece of it, but you also have to deal with meeting people's needs and making sure that those are addressed. As a mother, I know when I wanted to change my children's behavior, first you have to, what we call extinguish, you have to get them to stop doing what you don't want them to do. But then you also have to teach them a better way to get the need met that caused them to behave that way in the first place. So we do need to look at public safety, but we need to look at it not only from the point of view of more police on the streets, which I support, community policing, which I support, but how are we meeting their needs in other ways?
Thank you. And Ron?
Yeah, well, public safety is a number-one issue and one we've been working on. You'll notice that, well, you probably don't know this, but one of the reasons why we're one of the safer, larger cities, if you compare us to Antioch, Richmond, Vallejo, cities of same size, you could see Concord has done a much better job of having less crime in our cities. And one of the reasons is because we put on such a large priority. When we did the big cuts back when the recession first began, we trimmed our employees from 500 people down to 400, but we did not touch the police. Our public safety was saved, and the reason why is because we knew how important it was. And so that's the number one. There's a number two in that, that's also the economy and making sure that we have a healthy city, and we've been certainly working on that, as I mentioned before.
Thank you. And Laura?
Well, certainly, public safety is not only an issue in District One, it's an issue community-wide, no matter what community you live in. And I'm really proud of the work that our police department has done in our community, keeping us all safe. And we also have a district program where the officers work within localized areas in our community, so they really get to know the community and the issues within the community. So continuing to maintain that is certainly a priority. But what I hear from voters is street maintenance and traffic flow. The Waze app is just causing a lot of consternations for some of our neighborhood areas, where traffic is now able to find your neighborhood to cut through and avoid some of the major streets where they should be using to commute. So we're trying to address that. We're working on, proud of the work that we're doing with our traffic engineer, to try to reduce that cut-through traffic with different signage and adjustments of signal lights. And also, as commercial areas, our older commercial areas, as I mentioned earlier, are in need in some improvements, and I also want to plug our community policing efforts. I talked about districts, but we have community policing. We are one of the first communities to go out there with that, and it's still a strong program here today. So those are the issues that I see.
Thank you very much. Now, we've come to the end of the question-and-answer part of our program, and each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. The order is in the reverse order of their opening statements. So first is Laura Hoffmeister.
Thank you. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve our community for the last 20 years, five times as mayor. However, there's a lot of work that I still want to continue to do in our community. We need to improve and maintain our important services. We need to continue to create economic development strategies to attract, retain, and expand our businesses here in our community, for jobs for our community. We need to ensure that our budgets remain balanced and strong, and we need to still continue to work on the comprehensive world-class base reuse plan. This plan, I'm proud, that has 65% plus of open space, preserves our hillsides, and provides buffers to our existing neighborhood residential areas, and that we also work on affordable housing by the BART station. My experience in leadership is needed to address these key issues. I will continue to support an open and transparent public outreach and input, and treat you and your views with concerns, and concerns with respect and integrity. As a lifelong Concord resident of 56 years here in our community, I would be honored to receive your continued support and vote.
Thank you very much. Ron Leoni?
Thank you. It's certainly been my pleasure to serve this community for the past 24 years in public office, 16 years on the hospital, eight years on the city council. And during that time, of course, I feel honored to be able to, and I've demonstrated, the leadership needed to get things accomplished. In fact, I think the biggest thing, reason to vote for me is if you want somebody with vision and leadership, the willingness to do things, to get things accomplished, then I'm the one that you need to look to vote for, because I was the one that got the auto district put together so that they could fund for their street signs. I was the one with the downtown-specific committee. I was the one that helped with the designing the arches, the statue, the black signs, the donations for Music in the Park to keep that running for us. I was the one that came up with the idea of the one-time ordinance. We have a law that says that we have to pay down our unfunded liabilities, and I was the one that did the Visitors Bureau.
Thank you very much. And finally, Judy Herman.
Groups make better decisions than individuals, but only if those groups are made up of diverse voices working together for the best outcome. Districts, rather than citywide elections, gives Concord an opportunity to achieve diversity of voices. It's time for a change. The reuse project in the Concord Naval Weapons Station offers a tremendous opportunity for economic development, but only if it's integrated into the larger Concord area and not if this weapons station becomes an enclave separate from the rest of the community, contributing traffic and pulling resources away without adding value. This election, you have a choice. Concord can continue with one of the two long-term politicians, or you can choose a real change. Vote for me, Judy Herman, so that we can work together for more inclusion of the district neighborhood. Let's show Concord how we raise our voices and get the job done. I hope you will help me to make the change.
Thank you very much. These are your three candidates for Concord City Council, District One. Let's give them a hand. For more voting information, go to the League of Women Voters' website, VotersEdge.org. I want to thank our cosponsors, the county libraries, the county elections department, and CCTV, and especially your candidates, who have offered their service, their ideas, and their commitment. Thank you all for attending this forum this evening. Now we need to make room for the next forum, so thank you very much.
Thank you.[1773.41]